Guys, my name is Jerry Miller. Thank you kindly for joining us on a Wednesday afternoon in downtown Charlottesville. Today's program is going to be a really good one. We're going to spend an hour with a Almarle County School Board candidate from the Rio District that is looking to really help change the course and direction of a public school system that I think has lost its identity and is missing a North Star or a lighthouse of direction. And why Almarle County Public Schools are missing a North Star or a lighthouse of direction, or why they're searching for its soul and its identity, I'm just not sure of. Maybe it's shaky leadership from the superintendent, Dr. Matthew Haas. Maybe it's the one-party domination of Almarle County on a school board that is certainly partisan in many different ways. Maybe it's you and me, guys, folks of Almarle County who've allowed the school system to be monopolized by school board members that don't have the, speaking frankly, the ability to see the forest through the trees on a lot of things that are education and policy-related. I'm going to try to unpack that storyline today on the show with a guy that I think is a household name, certainly in education. Jim Dillenbeck is in the house, and we'll spend an hour with him. We'll take your questions. I'm going to open it up to you, the viewer and listener, to ask questions of a candidate. And guys, I'm going to ask very pointed ones myself. I'm going to ask whether at-large member Allison Spillman should resign. I'm going to ask about this crazy inclusivity policy that allows teenage boys to enter the locker rooms and bathrooms of teenage girls at Western Almarle High School to the point where girls are circulating a petition, just begging for privacy again and asking parents to sign the petition. I'm going to talk about declining performance and data tied to SOLs and grades and absenteeism. I'm going to talk about metal detectors and school resource officers. A lot we're going to cover on today's show. Judah Wickhauer's behind the camera. I would love to highlight some of the partners of the show. One partner in the Vermillion family, Charlottesville Sanitary Supply. We were there this morning, and the Vermillions are phenomenal people. Sixty-one consecutive years of business at Charlottesville Sanitary Supply. Their business is three generations of family, and the Vermillion family is five generations in Almarle County. They're online at charlottesvillesanitariesupply.com, and they're located on the high street. Anything sanitary, vacuum, swimming pool, hot tub-related, Charlottesville Sanitary Supply, ladies and gentlemen, is who you contact. All right, Judah, if we can go to the studio camera and then a two-shot as we welcome Jim. You've got a boatload of people watching, and even more are going to be watching at their leisure after the show. We start with the same question of every guest. Introduce yourself to the viewers and listeners that are watching the program.
Yeah, happy to. And thanks for having me on the show. I'm Jim Dillenbeck. I am a UVA grad, husband, father of four. And I tell friends who ask, why am I running for the school board, that I fell and hit my head, and when I woke up, came to realize that I had decided to be a part of the school board, or try to be a part of the school board. I taught at Almarle High School for seven years back in the 90s, when families from Charlottesville and surrounding counties would pay to have their kids come to Almarle County schools. The reverse is happening today. There are families in my district, in the Rio District, that are sending their kids to Charlottesville schools and private schools because of what's happening in the schools.
You're looking at one right now.
So, I hear that a ton. And part of the reason why I've decided to try to get elected to the board is to come to the aid of the families in my neighborhood. My next-door neighbor has two kids that go to Woodbrook Elementary School, which is struggling mightily right now. And they need a voice speaking up on their behalf, because apparently the current administration isn't hearing the pleas from teachers and students in the community. So, I left teaching in 97 because I couldn't afford to stay in teaching, raising a family. At the time, we had three young kids. My wife was staying at home. Living in Charlottesville on a teacher and coach's salary was just nearly impossible. So, I left there, went to work for what's now World Strides for five years, and then transitioned after 9/11 into financial planning. And I've been helping, I've been teaching and coaching, but just with couples and individuals instead of a classroom of teenagers. So, I've been doing that for the last 24 years. So, I think I have some experience both in the classroom and in business that is sorely needed on the board. Currently, there's one member of the school board that has classroom teaching experience that I'm aware of, and that's Graham Page, who's retiring at the end of this term. My opponent is a nice lady, but she has no teaching experience, as far as I understand.
We'll get to your opponent. We will get to Leslie Pryor. We'll get to what happened with Chuck Pace. We'll get to essentially a second crack at being on the school board for you. How about a State of the Union from you first on Almarle County Public Schools right now?
Yeah, I wish I had better news. I want to talk about three main topics. One is what I feel like is educational malpractice that's happening, especially at Woodbrook Elementary School. I can give you some statistics. They're pretty shocking. More than half of the students there at Woodbrook in the third grade are failing the reading and the math SOLs every year, and have been for the last 10 years or more, even before COVID. Among students of color, 75% failed the reading and the math, and 97% of students last year at Woodbrook failed the science test. What's going on? Burley Middle School is a little bit better, but more than half of the students of color there failed the reading. 61% failed the math tests. 67% failed the science test. And even at Almarle High School, where I used to teach, one-third of the students of color can't pass the reading SOL test, and yet they graduate year after year after year. So, this is, and in the meantime, your taxpayer dollars are funding $20,000 per student in Almarle County right now. It's the $280 million budget. So, the second thing that I've seen, as I've been campaigning over the last year and a half, is an exodus and an influx. There's an exodus of families who can afford to send their kids elsewhere from the county schools, and an influx of families who, in many cases, don't speak English as their primary language. So, the demographics have changed dramatically.
But it sounds like the gentrification of education to me.
Exactly, exactly. So, what's happening is we're having the economically disadvantaged families, the proportion of those students is on the rise. Again, families who can afford to send their kids elsewhere are doing that. And I know that you've made that decision as well, and I don't blame you. And then the third topic is, I did a FOIA request for salaries of central office administrators last week, and I have some figures that I can go into in more detail.
Please, please.
It's pretty shocking. I'll just say it this way. The central office salaries total about $10 million, and Dr. Haas and his five highest-paid staff, these are assistant superintendents, got an average raise of 9.75%.
Year-over-year?
Year-over-year. Teachers in Almarle County got a 3% year-over-year raise. That's, to me, that's just completely insane. So, I think we're top-heavy in this county, and I can tell you, after having talked to dozens of teachers, they do not feel like their voice is being heard. And that is something that I plan to change.
So, we have a school system that is underperforming from a test score standpoint. That's a key performance indicator we should follow. We have a school system that has bloated at the top from a payroll standpoint to the tune of $10 million. We have a school system that is embodying the phrase "gentrification of education," where the wealthy student, and maybe wealthy is even not the right word, the resourced family
Correct.
is choosing to jettison the school system for private schools and/or homeschools and/or Charlottesville public schools, which leaves a student body for Almarle County Public Schools, that is, English as a second language in greater share, leaves the student body in Almarle County Public Schools that is struggling to keep up with grade curriculum and is forcing Almarle County Public Schools to utilize social promotion to matriculate students through grades
Correct.
to maintain accredited, what's the word?
Accreditation?
Yep, and performance standards.
That's right.
That is an absolute recipe for disaster
Yeah.
that has left Almarle County, from my standpoint, and its public school system unstable and potentially unsafe, and certainly unpredictable.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there's been comparisons recently. Two friends of mine have drawn a comparison between Almarle County and York County, Virginia, Tidewater, where similar demographics, Almarle County has about 14,000 students, York County 13 and change, similar demographics in terms of race and economically disadvantaged students, and yet, so in York County, the average expense per student is 15,000, so 5,000 less than in Almarle, but the test score differential is 35 points among students of color. So, York County is doing better with less money than Almarle County by a lot. And so, people will ask me, people who are concerned about their taxes, and I just got, I think, a 12% tax hike by the county.
You're talking on the house you own.
On the house I own.
Yeah.
So, it's not, in my opinion, it's not a matter of, we need to spend more money, because when I was teaching, back in the old days, in the 90s, when I was teaching, the county was spending 5,000 per student. Now, rate of inflation and all that, I get that, but we had much better results. So, it's more a matter of, how are those dollars being spent?
I've been here 25 years, and the 25 years I've been here, from first year at the University of Virginia to now married man and father of two, at the beginning of those 25 years, Almarle County was the gold standard of education and the Commonwealth.
That's right.
Literally the sterling example of what you wanted a school system to be in. And you can actually point to Crozay and Western Almarle Schools, Meriwether, actually, can I say Meriwether anymore? I guess it's Ivy.
It's Ivy.
Murray.
Brownsville.
Henley, Brownsville.
Yep.
Crozay Elementary. The entire development of Crozay was tied to the incredible academic output of these schools.
Yeah.
People sprinted to buy quarter-acre lots in Old Trail
Yeah.
and sprinted to develop Crozay from country into, my standpoint, overpopulated because of the output of schools, Meriwether, Murray, Henley, Brownsville, Crozay, Western.
Yeah.
Now, even those are facing some academic challenges and some social challenges, which we will get to. Here's the $68 million question, which I think you had a clear-cut answer to, and maybe you do. You might also be a lottery winner here, but how the hell did we get to this point? How did we get to this point where you go from gold standard to potentially bottom of the barrel in a generation?
Yeah, you know, I don't know the answer to that, Jerry. I think it's a bit like the story of how do you boil a frog? You know, you turn the heat up, and he doesn't realize it until it's too late. I think it's been a combination of things, and people will blame COVID. Yes, COVID played a part, but the decline started well before 2020. This is my opinion, and I have to be careful a little bit about what I say, because if all goes well, I'm going to be sitting on the board in less than six months. But my perception is that Dr. Haas and the school board have paid more attention to education theory that was taught at Curry School at UVA and elsewhere, other parts of the country. We wanted to be progressive, and so we drank, we, meaning the board, drank that Kool-Aid, and it has turned into what appears to be somewhat of an echo chamber. I go to board meetings, and normally I'm one of about five people that aren't on the payroll that are at the meetings. It's going to be very different tomorrow night. But the sense that I get is that they'll have public speakers, and I'm sure they're tired of hearing from me because I've spoken a dozen times, but it's almost like they're not tuned into the frequency. They like to hear each other talk, and they share their ideas among themselves, but when a teacher from the Western feeder pattern spoke two years ago, and there's a link on my website to her three-minute speech to the board, warning, look, you as a board are not supporting teachers, and if you're not going to support teachers, you're going to have to step aside. That's one of the main reasons why I decided to throw my hat in the ring. So, I think that there's been this focus on, you know, the PhDs, and let's try open classrooms, Pam Moran's idea from a few years ago. And you look at Woodbrook Elementary School, where there are still some open classrooms, it is a disaster. Same thing has happened at Agner Elementary. So, there have been, and Kate Acuff herself said in the meeting, last meeting, the high school center model, and now they're building a center too, does not work. It does nothing to alleviate the overcrowding at Almarle High School. When I was teaching there 30 years ago, I was in a trailer because it was overcrowded then.
It's worse.
It's worse now.
It's worse, yeah. It's worse.
So, I think it happened gradually, like many things. And if you've read the book Good to Great, it's kind of what happened. The school system stopped hearing critical feedback, and they started listening to each other speak, and that's when they sort of got off the path.
The, Matthew Haas and his lieutenants and this one-party elected school board is punch-drunk on their own politics and Kool-Aid. And they've been nothing but chugging their own Kool-Aid and their own politics for a generation. And as a result, we've gotten to this point. I mentioned yesterday, my wife and I are paying nearly 25K to send our oldest to a private school, and goodness gracious, we'd love to have that 25K.
Oh, yeah.
But at the same time, it's our son, and we know we're going to have to do it when our youngest, who's soon to be three, goes to kindergarten, because we did it for our oldest, and we would have tremendous guilt if we didn't also do the same thing for our second kid, because we love them equally.
Yeah.
And at that point, when it's all said and done, and they matriculate from kindergarten through senior year in high school and have high school diplomas, we're all in with escalators somewhere between $800,000 and $900,000.
Yeah.
Could buy a beach house for that. Could buy a beach house for that.
Yeah.
And we're paying taxes that are funding the public school at the same time as well.
Right.
Which is, I'm paying twice.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of us out there that are like that. And there's this misconception that the private schools and the homeschools, these families are just Scrooge McDuck and rolling in money, and that's not the case. It is not the case.
That's right.
We're just trying to do what is best for our children, because there are hearts walking outside of our body.
Yeah.
So, I'm very in tune with what you're trying to do. I have to ask you a pointed question with Dr. Matthew Haas, the superintendent. In total compensation, I believe, right around a quarter million dollars in total compensation per year here, is Matthew Haas earning, is the value proposition of Matthew Haas's output a quarter million dollars in taxpayer compensation?
It's actually a little more than that. His salary is $273,000. This is public information.
Okay.
Plus the benefits.
So, he's north of 300?
North of 300.
Okay.
I have my personal opinions, and I think he's, he is absolutely dedicated to what he sees as his mission to run the schools. But I think he's made some significant missteps, and I think he's not, from what others have told me, he's not open to any sort of criticism about his plan. And again, I come back to the families at schools like Woodbrook Elementary, where most of those, the majority of those students are not learning how to read. They're not getting the education that they are due in a public, in a public setting. And ultimately, somebody has to take responsibility for that. And that is on Dr. Haas, in my opinion. If I were in charge of this, I would do, as a naval officer, a friend of mine says, we need to create a tiger team. That is, when there's a military objective, you gather the best and brightest and say, we're going to attack this problem, because it is a problem. I have a wife and a son in medical care. If they were a part of a medical clinic where half, more than half of the patients were dying, not receiving, you know, good treatment, the clinic would be closed down. And so, I think we need to ask the tough questions. What are you doing? And if the board continues on its current path, what's the definition of insanity?
Same thing, over and over.
Same thing, expecting different results.
Yeah.
So, I think we've got to ask the question, what is Dr. Haas doing or not doing that needs to change?
Is there accountability of Dr. Haas performance-wise from the school board? I see a school board that almost, is the word cowtails? Just kowtows?
Kowtows.
To Dr. Haas on everything? I mean, where is the pushback, the accountability? Where is the, you know, check twice, you know, was it measure twice before you cut?
Yeah.
Where's any of that? Because all I see is just green light and frictionless leadership with the school board
Yeah.
as it applies to an administrator
Yeah.
that's 300,000-plus in yearly compensation, as you highlighted, that has a cabinet that's $10 million a year and payroll bloat, that's leading a school system that's underachieving and underperforming.
Yeah, in my opinion, he's running the show. He's steering the ship, whatever analogy you want to use. And the board is saying to him, we trust you. We will do, we'll support you, you know, whether it was his statement that he made last week after the Spillman post, or any number of other issues. And because, you know, nobody on the board, to my knowledge, has ever run a business, and aside from Graham Page, nobody else has been a classroom teacher, with the possible exception of Dr. Berlin. I think she may have been a special ed assistant or a teacher at some point. So, in my opinion, they don't really know what the solutions are. They're trusting, they're hoping that he does.
Comments coming in quickly. Put your comments at the feed. I'll relay them live on air. I have some comments of my own. You, perfect segue into Allison Spillman. What the heck is going on with Allison Spillman? I mean, jeez Louise, I'm just going to look at this as like a dad, okay? I'm going to look at this as a father of two boys. My wife and I have been talking about this for a week. You have an at-large school board member who is one of seven people trusted with managing a budget. What's the yearly budget for Almarle County Schools?
$280 million.
$280 million. There's seven people that are responsible for a $280 million school budget, folks.
That's the operating budget.
That's the operating budget.
That's not the capital improvement budget.
Yeah, that's just the operating. That's not like building more stuff for the schools to make the school system accommodate more kids in non-trailer fashion, okay? $280 million. Allison Spillman decides to pick up her cellphone, get on her personal Facebook page, and she says, oh, it's my personal Facebook page. I should be able to do whatever I want, which is crazy talk.
Yeah.
That's just absolute Looney Tunes.
Yeah.
And then she uses the phrase Ku Klux Klan and KKK when talking about kids at Western Almarle in a school group.
Yeah.
Well, can we, I'll just start open-ended. What happened with you there? What were you thinking there?
Yeah. I won't even speculate, other than I think she was speaking as a mom, and my wife and I have four kids, and I know that when the kids are involved, and the mama bear comes out.
Hundred percent.
And I think that's a piece of what happened. She, in my opinion, let her personal emotions get the better of her and made a post that was inappropriate for
Anyone!
a member of the elected school board, right?
Anyone!
Yeah, if it's, you know, if she's not on a board, she can say whatever she wants to. But to say what she did was inappropriate. And what, I looked up the club policy on ACPS website to see, well, is it, was it legal? Was it appropriate for Turning Point USA at Western Almarle to invite Victoria Cobb to come and speak? And the answer is yes. It's not, there's nothing in the school board policy that says that she can't do this. So, you know, I would say, we, the members of the board, have a responsibility to protect the rights of all students. And the rights of those students, Noah Coffin and the others at Western Almarle, was to have this speaker come in. And just because she may say some things that run counter to Allison Spillman's personal beliefs, and I get it, she's got a trans child, she saw that as a threat, that doesn't give her the right to spout off on Facebook the way she did.
It was infuriating. It was insulting. It was dangerous. It was unstable. It puts a concerning and dangerous microscope on the school system. It's going to cause Thursday's school board meeting to be unpredictable and uncertain.
Yeah.
Does Allison Spillman need to resign?
You know, I don't know. I'm not going to
How about a different phrase of this? Different phrase of this question. You're running for school board. If you were on the school, you tried to get on the school board, was it, was it last year?
Three times.
Yeah, right. Multiple times here, okay? If you were on the school board, would you have pushed for Allison Spillman's resignation?
That's a good question. I think I would have posed the question, does this, does this rise to the level of an offense that would suggest she should have stepped down? And, you know, my inclination at the time was to say, yes, she should, she should step down. She made a comment, just like I believe Jay Jones should step out of the race for Attorney General of Virginia, because it demonstrates a lack of awareness of her position. And the fact that she didn't apologize, nor did Dr. Haas, nor Kate Acuff, in their statements following up on this
Their follow statements.
are troubling.
The follow statements from, well, first Allison Spillman. Allison Spillman comparing students at Western Almarle High School to the Ku Klux Klan was, like I said, dangerous, and her word choice was, she should be held accountable for her word choice. The more significant mistake from Allison Spillman was the follow-up statement that did not utilize the phrase, I'm sorry for using these words. I was wrong. What I said was taken out of context, but as an adult and leader of this community, I should have chosen better words. Instead, she hid behind, I posted on my personal Facebook page, not my public one. Then she tried to do some word salad or some double talk with, oh, you're just manipulating what I'm saying because you don't agree with my politics or my platform. That follow-up statement legitimately, to me, shows someone who is not in touch with reality, her position as a leader, with the impact of words and their meaning and their significance as an elected official.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, it just, and she's one of seven people that's leading a $280 million budget
Yeah.
that has to take a school system that's underperforming and help turn it around.
Right.
When she made that mistake, and then doubled down on the mistake with the statement, my wife and I said, to each other over breakfast at coffee, this hardship we're doing with this private school and this $25,000, we made the right choice without question.
Yeah, yeah.
Reinforced it for us.
Yep. Yeah. Interestingly, former school board chair, who's not on the board any longer, pulled her kids out of public school.
Let them know who it was. I heard about this. Let them know who it was.
Katrina Coulson.
Yeah.
Pulled her kids
St. Anne's Bellfield.
out of school, out of, out of public school, and sent them to private school. I don't, again, I don't blame her.
Don't blame Coulson at all.
But if you're going to be on the board and you're going to make But if you're going to be on the board and you're going to, to, to make an attempt to create a better learning environment for all students, then what message are you sending? As a member of the school board, she was a former member, she wasn't on the board.
See, he's being extremely nice here, I'll add a little color here, cause he's a nice person. I'm, I'm not as nice as Jim, I'll just cut to the chase, I'm not. A school board chair who utilized her platform as school board chair to trampoline into a position of delegate, she's a delegate now.
Correct.
Okay, and she's ambitious and clearly, if we read the tea leaves, has, uh, motivation and talent, I hope she, she watches this, and talent to climb the political totem pole. She absolutely does.
Yeah.
Okay, but a former chair saying no to Alamo County Public Schools and yes to private schools, almost immediately after trampolining off the school board into this position as a state delegate.
Right.
That's a damning, that's a damning turn of events.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's a damning turn of events.
Yeah.
How does Allison Spillman repair the damage done? Not just to herself as an at-large, uh, member, the damage done to the school board? Because we then had the chair and the vice chair issue a statement, co-sign with Superintendent Matthew Haas that looked like a statement that was run through Chat GPT, was word salad.
Yeah.
I, I literally had to read it three or four times, I'm like, I just spent a couple of minutes, five minutes, 10 minutes reading this. I have no idea what these people are saying.
Yeah.
Like this is just mumbo jumbo word salad.
Yeah.
That offered no contrition, no apology, no distancing of themselves from Spillman's Ku Klux Klan comparison. Basically, their mumbo jumbo word salad Chat GPT statement seemed to me that they were lockstep with Spillman and, and what she's about.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, to answer your question, I think the only way that this could settle down and the only way forward, in my opinion, would be for her to make a statement, and maybe it's tomorrow night at the school board meeting, apologizing for her words. I think she should apologize to TPUSA at Western Almaral first. But also to, to, um, you know, the constituents of the county that she, she chose poorly. And she, you know, regrets use of the comparison with KKK and so on. Um, I, I think to me, that would be the only way that she could repair, um, the damage, so to speak. And, and, and hopefully, you know, move forward. Cause I think, you know, she, she is, um, obviously she cares a lot about her own kids and other kids in, in A C P S.
But she, I get that and I, a thousand percent. And, and in no world do I think that Allison Spillman should or does prioritize the Alamo County student body ahead of her own children. In no world should that ever happen. Her top priority as a mother and parent is her kids, her pack first. The Alamo County student body second. We all as viewers and listeners and just intelligent people have to understand that.
Yeah.
But it's not a world we live in where it's like, I have to do my kids ahead of the, the scoo, the student body.
Yeah.
It's not that world. It's just, don't create the danger.
Yeah.
Don't, she created this mess.
Yeah.
And, and it's, the, the concerning aspect is this is your leader for a 200, nearly 300 million dollar budget.
Yeah.
And the, 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 one of seven people trusted with turning the, the ship around. And then the real concern for me, the biggest concern for me in all this, the biggest, what the hell is going on? Was the statement by, uh, uh, the, the chair, the vice chair of the school board and then co-signed by Matthew Haas.
Yeah.
I'm like, how the heck do you not say, this is bad word choice at the very least?
Right. Right. Yeah, I, I, I agree, I agree. And to your earlier point, I think the board is and has been, uh, attempting to appear unanimous. They stand together. And several of them are committee members of the Almaral Democratic, uh, you know, uh, officers or whatever on the Almaral Democratic Committee. Which to me seems like a conflict of interest and a, and a conflict of the.
Why, why a conflict of interest?
Well, if you look at the ethics, code of ethics for the school board.
Bipartisan people.
Number nine says, no member of the board shall get any partisan or financial gain from their position on the board. And if you go back and look at campaign finance tables, the, the Democratic, uh, Almaral Democrats have donated to, I believe, every one of the members of the current board, as well as my current opponent.
Yeah, but to, to offer some fair and honest pushback on that, uh, I believe there was also some support from the Republican Party for Dr. Bryce's campaign and the Spillman Bryce race. Um, I, I individually, probably, maybe not from the Republican Party, but key members of the Republican Party that made donations.
Yeah.
But are we, and I'm pushing back again here, I mean, it's a talk show.
Yeah.
That's what I'm supposed to do here.
Yep.
Pushing back again. Are we really to believe in 2025 in the area of social and digital media that conservative and liberal are not going to be associated with the candidates that are running for school board?
Oh, for sure, it's, it's the reality.
You are monicured as conservative.
I am.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I'm very careful to tell people, look, I'm nonpartisan. People wanna, they wanna pigeonhole me, they wanna know, are you, are you red or blue?
But human beings can't be nonpartisan by the nature of being human beings.
Yeah.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, yeah.
We have feelings and we have statements and stances.
For sure. Yeah, and, and I would say this, that, um, I've been very careful to say, I, I don't want to run as a Republican and I'm not obviously going to run as a Democrat because they've, they've endorsed my opponent. I want to run as a concerned citizen and some of my, you know, if you, if you had no idea which way I was leaning politically and I, I, I'm not a member of either party. And, and just read through some of my policy ideas, you might think I'm a Democrat. If you had to pigeonhole me one, one or the other, you might say, well, he's a Democrat because he, he wants to increase teacher pay and he wants to support some of the things that the teacher union is in voting in favor, collective bargaining. I think it's actually a good idea. Which is not a conservative platform. So there are certain issues where I would be more blue than red. But getting back to your, your question, I, I think unfortunately, the board has been so completely one-sided for so many years. I don't know when the last time somebody, there was a conservative on the school board. It was probably in the nineties. When we had better outcomes and spent less money. So, yeah, I'll leave it at, at that in terms of partisan politics. I know it's, it's a, it's a part of the real world.
Well, what's happening is, is your opponents and the Democrats are trying to moniker you a Republican because in Almaral County, the R is akin to tar and feather.
Correct.
And they're trying to do that to create, uh, headwinds for you for winning this race because you're a likable, common sense, sensible guy.
Right.
And the reality is you're more center aisle than left or right, like a large majority of Almaral Countyans.
Correct.
Virginians and Americans.
Correct.
I think we're very much just center aisle, center aisle, common sense people.
Right.
And, and the one, one of the topics that should be, uh, a unifying center aisle topic is kids in schools at education and futures.
Right.
But unfortunately, it's become a political la, I mean, it's, it's, it's crazy what's happening with public school education. It's like a landmine of like, uh, political, uh, atomic bombs.
Yeah.
I mean, segue, as Judith's putting headlines on screen, what the heck is going on at Western Almaral High School? At Western Almaral High School, I found out about this yesterday, we talked about it on the show yesterday. Then after we talked about it on the show yesterday, I see Rob is, is posting all about it. Now I'm being told through, through our contacts that print, radio and television are going to start covering it.
Yeah.
There was a petition sent to us. I can't, I'm having a hard time even saying this. There was a petition sent to us that was originated by girls at Western Almaral High School, I'm not gonna use, I'm not gonna, these are minors, these are girls.
Yeah.
Girls, students at Western Almaral High School that are begging, basically hat in hand.
Yeah.
Adults to sign a petition online that says, boys, teenage boys at Western Almaral High School are going into our locker rooms and bathrooms. And they're using this inclusivity policy that Matthew Haas and Alamo County, uh, school board and public schools have rolled out, where if you're transgender curious, if you're considering transitioning from one sex to another, your biological sex to another, and you're curious, then you can actually go shopping, air quotes, at another locker room and see if that fits your curiosity. And what these girls with this petition are saying is that these boys that are considering transitioning to girls are coming into our locker rooms, not because they're necessarily trans curious, but because they're just boys doing what boys do, wanting to look at girls that are not fully clothed.
Yeah.
And if anyone didn't see this coming and say like, this is what's gonna happen?
Yeah.
Because I was a terrible, terrible teenager, okay? I mean, I'm talking about like, all the bad things that you could possibly do, I did all the bad things.
Yeah.
Like literally like leading the bad crowd, okay? Like that type of guy. Of course I would have done this.
Yeah.
Right? This is the dumbest thing I've ever heard.
Yeah.
But I, but I empathize as now a father who can't do the dumbest stuff ever because I have a wife and two kids and a mortgage and employees, right?
Yeah.
Where it's like, I have to do the right things, right? Like, I, I, I empathize with the girls big time that they're in their most vulnerable state, changing clothes during a time of puberty.
Yeah.
And they feel like their most intimate moment is exposed to the opposite sex.
Yeah.
What the hell is going on here?
It's nuts.
It's nuts dude, it's so nuts.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, uh, I heard your show yesterday and I'm so grateful that there's a group of girls.
Yeah.
Exactly, just like with, with Noah Coffin and the Turning Point Kids. It blows my mind, I mean, yes and no, I'm, I'm not entirely surprised. But I am 100% behind the effort to change that. If, if I were on the board, I would be knocking on Dr. Haas's door daily until that gets, that needs to change like yesterday.
Hundred percent.
I am, you know, I, I'm gonna say, I want to support students who, trans students who are genuinely going through the process. Transgender students need protection, just like any other student. I, I, I get that. But to allow biological, you know, boys, male at birth, to go into locker rooms and bathrooms for girls is completely unacceptable. It, it blows my mind as a dad and as a, as a, uh, former teacher and coach. Thankfully, we didn't have to deal with this back in the nineties. Uh, I'm not sure what I would have done, aside from say, hell no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna allow this. So, um, I don't know what needs to happen in order for this petition to go through and for the policy to change. Like you, I, I wasn't, I'm not sure I was the troublemaker that you were, but I taught and coached, you know, kids, young kids, young men for 10 years, three in middle school in Lynchburg before I came here and taught at Almaral High School.
You know what it's like.
I know what it's like.
Yeah.
And I know my, my kids couldn't get away with anything because I knew, I knew what was going on in the mind of a 15-year-old boy, I'm sorry. So, um, yeah, the fact that, that the girls had to, had to initiate this, this thing just makes me so sad.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that this will, will come up in discussions like tomorrow.
For the, the print, radio and television is all over the show right now and viewers and listeners, put your comments in the feed and I'll relay them live on air. I got a lot of comments that I'm gonna get to here in a matter of moments. For the print, radio and television that's watching the program right now, this is the storyline that should be in the new cycle as we're now a month, less than a month away from this election. This is the storyline. It should, it, it, yes, it should be the Spillman and the, and the Ku Klux Klan and the, the, the support from the chair and vice chair and the superintendent on Spillman's Ku Klux Klan comments. But girls digitally hat in hand, begging adults to sign a petition so they could have their most intimate moments kept private from boys who are using the curiosity, who are used, who are leveraging, who are exploiting, exploiting is a better word. Exploiting the inclusivity policy that Superintendent Matthew Haas and the school board have approved to allow boys into locker rooms to watch girls in their intimate moments? That is, if I was a, if I was a parent of a daughter, I have two sons, okay? But if I was a parent of a daughter in Alamo County Public Schools, in particular Western Almaral High School, I wouldn't just be at Thursday's school board meeting, I would be at Matthew Haas's house and Kate Akuff's house, I swear to God, I would be. I like, and, 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 and I, God forbid what my wife would do. Who's an Irish Catholic, hot-headed, lover dearly, passionate.
Yeah.
Person. She would be huffing and puffing and blowing the house down.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, uh, I, I plan later today to send Dr. Akuff an email and say, what, what is the process? How can this policy be changed immediately? Because the pressure needs to be on Dr. Akuff and, uh, and Dr. Haas to, uh, take a look at this. They need to hear from the public, this is not acceptable. And I think it was Loudoun County earlier this year, probably Loudoun, where two, two boys.
It was Loudoun.
Who had a female student come into the locker room or a bathroom, I'm not sure which. And they fussed about that and they were suspended. Talk about upside down.
I think you also had in Loudoun County where it was, uh, uh, a trans boy, a biological male go into female locker room as a transgender and there was rape involved. And then there was repositioning in a different school and a cover up and it happened again.
Yeah.
And it happened again.
Yeah.
So, you know, uh, comments, we'll get to comments here. Kate Schart's watching the program. She says, uh, I hope you win, Jim, you've spoken common sense here today, much needed. Philip Dow, one great guy, this Jim, he needs to be elected. Chad Wood, uh, is giving you emoji props left and right here. William McChesney, uh, uh, giving your support, watching the program here. Suzanne Daly has got some comments. She says, Jerry, the answer to your question on how this happened, Almaral County Public Schools struggling and at this point is equity, A C P S prioritizes equity over merit. Equity is equal outcome regardless of access. People think equity is equality, it is not.
Correct.
The 50% is the lowest grade you can get, unlimited retakes, zero homework policy, as well as writing schools of merit-based Mesa program, as well as ridding schools
Yes.
of merit-based Mesa program. Calling general basic classes advanced to make kids and parents feel better. Moving to a model of supervisors rather than teachers, a plan they have had in place for years. Not listening to teachers who are frustrated with hands being tied with discipline, expectations, homework, retakes. There's an equity priority statement in the signature line of every employee's email in the county. Haas has needed to be fired for years due to the bombing out of test scores under his leadership. But until parents start asking questions, paying attention and advocating, A C P S will continue with the rhetoric and the everything is just fine attitude. They have been hemorrhaging teachers due to the lack of leadership and support. It is a raging dumpster fire unfortunately, and they don't listen to parents who pay attention. That's Suzanne Daly there. Vanessa Parkhill in Earlysville, thank you, Jim, for your support, thank you, or thank you, Jim, thank you, Jim. Spending more is not always the solution, spending wisely is critical. Randy O'Neil throwing significant shade at the superintendent. Uh, I appreciate your comments, Randy, we're not gonna get into all these. Jason Noble, uh, says, it is noble, it's a noble endeavor to be nonpartisan. Sadly, that's not the game the other side plays in Alamo County, which is, he's 100% right there. More comments continuing, I mean, comments, uh, faster than I can keep up with. Um, I'll, I'll reference this from, uh, Deep Throat. Jim sounds way too sensible to be electable in Alamo County sadly. I hope I'm wrong here, he says. I, I mean, you literally, I won't say who, we shouldn't say who, because that meeting was done prior to the show in confidence. We were talking about some other business. You had a heavy hitter in our studio, heavy, heavy hitter, that literally said, why are you doing this? It was the first thing he said to you, like, why are you doing this? And then I respected your answer back, I mean, how, how many times have you heard that?
Uh, a lot. Yeah, my, my friends, uh, and some extended family say, why, what, what are you thinking? Yeah, and, you know, I, Yeah. And, you know, I, I'm going to say, I don't have all of the answers. Uh, but I have a lot of questions, right? And i- if elected, I'm going to be spending the majority of my time hearing from people who have been in the trenches and have some ideas about what we can do to turn this thing around. Let's look at the Mississippi miracle. Law was passed 10 or 15 years ago saying that no third grader will be advanced to the fourth grade unless he or she can read and pass the tests, that, uh, pa- pass the standardized tests. Shocking. They went from near the bottom in test scores to leading the nation in improvement in test scores within a short period of time. So, um, yeah, I mean, I, um, I, I don't know how much I'll be able to accomplish if I'm elected, being, you know, on a board with six other people.
Yeah.
Um, and as Ned Galloway told me, uh, a few months ago, he said, Jim, if you get elected, you're going to have to learn how to get along with the others on the board if you're going to get anything accomplished.
Which I think you, I think you have that skill set. I mean, you're a likable guy.
Well, I've got, I've got some ideas, some, some of my top priorities and Suzanne really, she nailed it. I mean, I, I, I think I might have to reach out to her to.
Suzanne Daly.
Help, uh, with my campaign website. But one of the things she mentioned is the grading policy and the homework policy. That has been completely destructive of student progress. And as a good friend of mine who's the math chair at Almar High School said, and to the board, look, this grading policy is counterproductive. Getting a 50 by putting your name on a paper does not help the students. Being able to retake tests three or four times, not only doesn't help the students, it's detrimental to the teachers. I can't imagine if I had 120 students, which was pretty normal for me when I was teaching government at Almar, to have to keep up with whose reta- you know, which retake and, and create three or four different tests for, that's crazy.
Well, and it's also happening at a time, and this is the educational gap, this is the gentrification of education. It's also happening at a time when the enrollment at private schools are upticking.
Yeah.
All the private schools, the enrollment is upticking. All of them are upticking.
Yeah.
And that does not happen at the private schools. So you have in this, 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 this community, we call Central Virginia. And the largest county in Central Virginia is Almar County, in a lot of ways, the driver of Central Virginia. You have, most of the private schools based in Almar County. The enrollment in Almar County private schools going up. The education offered at the private schools at Almar County, I'm seeing it firsthand. Dude, the, the stuff they're doing in second grade is legitimately what they're doing in third grade and early fourth grade at the public schools.
Right.
What, I'll say it again. What our kid is doing in second grade is what is being done in third grade and early fourth grade in the public schools, folks. So you have kids that are performing at, ahead of the level clip in the private schools, while kids that are in the public schools are performing at below a gray level clip.
Correct.
And then they're going to enter society and wonder why we have gaps in wealth and gaps in society and gaps in performance and gaps in just quality of life.
And it's going to get a lot worse.
Right.
Before it gets better.
Um, school resource officers, that in a lot of ways was like the hot topic. And then Spillman does the Ku Klux Klan thing, then Haas supports Spillman's Ku Klux Klan thing. And then I find out that there's these guys in the locker room that are watching girls unchanged by saying they're trans curious. Uh, Ginny Who says, my understanding is that Western Almar High School, that there are gender neutral bathrooms, so there is no benign and innocent explanation for biological males to be in the female spaces. A hundred percent Ginny Who, there are gender neutral bathrooms at Western Almar High School.
Correct.
A hundred percent, and you're a hundred percent right. School resource officers, where do you want to go on that?
Oh, I absolutely, uh, approve the notion that every high school in this county should have a, an SRO. No, no doubt. We had one at Almar back in the nineties. The relationship with students was fantastic. And, you know, the argument that a number of people made that.
Pipeline to prison?
Oh, yeah. It's a joke.
It's a joke. It's, you know what's a pipeline to prison? Doing stuff that can put you in prison.
And not learning how to read and being concerned enough to teach kids how to read. But if they don't read by the end of the third or fourth grade.
You're screwed.
They're, they're screwed.
Yeah.
For the rest of their.
They're screwed.
Their lives.
Yeah.
And that's what's happening right now to the majority of students.
Why, why do we walk through metal detectors at sporting events at Scott Stadium, the John Paul Jones Arena? And why do we walk through metal detectors for, for football games at Almar High School or Monticello High School or Western Almar High School? And why do we walk through metal detectors at, at basketball games and, and, and at airports? But we don't walk through metal detectors at, at public schools? Or why is there grief given? Why is there people saying that a school resource officer is a pipeline to prison? It's not a pipeline to prison. That's just a word salad that you're trying to use to manipulate the narrative.
Correct.
The, the pipeline to prison is your actions that are against law.
Correct. 100%.
Yeah. If you're not doing any, if you don't have a weapon on your person, or you're not breaking the law, you're going to do all right in school.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, this is just, it's just, I don't, it doesn't just seem like common sense?
Yeah. And I, I think the pushback.
Your whole platform should be like, I'm going to return common sense Almar County Public Schools.
Yeah. I've had several supporters say that. The pushback on the metal detectors, at least at Almar High School, and I think at Western.
Inefficiency of them?
It was the inefficiency that.
But that got figured out though.
That's poor planning.
That's poor planning.
Yeah. They, they didn't have enough detectors for the 2,000 students. Again, poor planning, it should have happened 10, 15 years ago.
Of not having an overcrowded school.
Exactly.
Yeah. And, and, and from all, everything I've heard from the parents of Almar County, uh, Almar High School students is that inefficiency has been fixed. That it's not nearly as bad as it once was.
Oh, that's.
That's what I've heard.
That's not the message that came out, uh.
That it's still extremely inefficient.
That is, oh, you're talking about the metal detectors.
Yeah, the metal detectors, yeah.
I, I, I did hear on that point, it has gotten better.
Well, no, no, but the overpopulation of Almar High School is still very present.
It's, it's terrible.
Yeah, it's terrible. And there obviously needs to be a high school built north of town.
Correct.
Which is so obvious.
Yeah.
And like, the high school model strikes me as a model now of neighborhood high schools as opposed to what we have now, which just also seems like common sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I mean, um, again, Almar High School was overcrowded in 97 when they built Monticello. And they told us when I was teaching it at, at Almar that Monticello wouldn't, um, take that many students away from Almar. And in fact, you know, you fast forward 20 years later, that's absolutely true. And, you know, they're building condos and, and apartments and houses in the Rio District and along 29 North. So we should have built a fourth high school. The High School Center 1 was built for, I don't know, 200 or 300 students. There are less than 200 students there now. High School Center 2, which is supposed to open in next summer, supposed to be for 200 to 400 students. It's not going to have that many students. And even if it did, the projection that Maya Kumazawa made a couple of weeks ago is there would still be overcrowding at Western and at Almar within two to three years. It's just kicking the can down.
Kicking the can down the road. Uh, Joshua Batman giving you props on LinkedIn. Um, Carol Thorpe, uh, watching the program. She says, she's loving what you're saying. I regret that as a resident of the Jack Jewett district, I cannot vote for you. I wish school board elections were general, uh, Almar County wide, she says.
Yeah.
There's a guy that's watching in Eastern Tennessee named Jeremy Wilson, watches the show regularly. He says, I unfortunately live in Tennessee, but you would have my vote, Jim. All right, let, let's, I'll just end the, I'll end the interview this way. Okay? You have a month left, and this is the same thing I said to Dave Shreve. And I've been doing this, I've been in this community for 25 years. Act, first job at UVA was working for the Daily Progress. Worked for NBC 29, doing on-air television. Worked for Monticello Media, worked for many of the media companies before launching this business in 2008. Intimately know the news cycle, on the pulse of the new, driving the news cycle.
Yeah.
If you do not go on the offensive and be an alpha aggressive and utilize the Spillman misstep, the, the dangerous misstep, the, the superintendent, co-chair, vice chair response, this lunacy with the locker rooms and teenage boys watching teenage girls in their most intimate moments under the guise of being trans curious, the SROs and the, I mean, I'm going to use the phrase, I'm going to get in trouble from this for my wife, but this kind of shows you, piss poor test scores.
Yeah.
And like, alpha aggressive dog that, how are you going to win this race?
Yeah.
And I think you should win this race.
Well, um.
But there is a track record.
Yeah, there's a track record. Last year I came within 6% or 5 and a half percent of Chuck Pace, who was a great guy, great teacher.
Passed away.
Very, very dialed in to education. We agreed on a lot of points. Um, I actually got more votes on Election Day than Chuck did. In part because I was out knocking on hundreds of doors. As far as I know, Chuck didn't do that and my opponent isn't doing that. Um, and I had people at every precinct in the Rio District saying, hey, consider voting for Jim. And so we, we actually got more votes on Election Day, but we lost in the early voting. So this year I've gotten a mailer out before early voting started on September 19th. Just introducing myself. I have more name recognition now. I have more signs up. I've knocked on hundreds of doors in neighborhoods that I didn't get to last year. I'll be out there for four hours, five hours again this Saturday. I'm out at the county office building every Friday greeting voters. Even though a small fraction of them are in the Rio District. Um, and my message, I've got another mailer coming out next week that pointing out the, the, the discrepancy and the lousy test scores and the fact that I'm promoting change on the board. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm running against the school board essentially. Uh, I'm running against the status quo.
You're running against the establishment.
Correct.
You're running against, you got tough. I hope, you know, I straight, I'm going to straight up say this. I normally, I don't say stuff like this on the show. I hope you win. Like you need to be on the board.
Appreciate it.
You are like, uh, just a common sense guy.
Appreciate it.
Like, I swear to God.
Yeah.
But this is like, this is like, uh, mountain biking up Carter's Mountain with a, uh, a single gear bike.
I've done a lot of biking, so I can appreciate that analogy.
With, with, with not 29 inch tires.
Yeah.
No shocks.
Yeah.
Front or back, and maybe not even a seat.
Yeah, I mean, I'm exhausted. Yeah, I'm tired. I have to admit, I'm tired. And I'm so glad that we're inside of four weeks, four weeks from yesterday. Uh, and this, this whole thing is going to be over. So I'm optimistic. Um, I think if enough people understand that I'm running to bring better education to their kids and the kids in the community for those, especially for, for all kids, but especially those kids that don't have a voice, then, uh, and if I can get people to understand. When I tell people the test scores from Woodbrook, they're like, no, that can't be true. What's your source of information? The website, Google, Woodbrook Elementary School, school profile. There it is in black and white. So, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to get more name recognition and, um, it's just, it's a matter of working hard.
We have, uh, Conan Owen watching the program. He just sent me a text, Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. He's the owner. Wants me to give you a little nudge, nudge for any mailers or marketing collateral. Use Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. It's locally owned and operated. He's a Darton school graduate. Sir Speedy of Central Virginia does the, uh, marketing collateral, the print and the signage for our firm.
Maybe I'll go to him for my third mailer.
Sir Speedy of Central, yeah, Conan Owen. Uh, he, he can beat any price.
Excellent.
Um, all right, I'll, uh, close with this, and you've already answered this question here, like, why, just I'll give you the question here. Well, you got a lot of people watching here, by the way. Why should the people watching the program vote, uh, Jim Dillenbeck and over, uh, Leslie Pryor?
Well, I appreciate, uh, all of the, um, sentiments, especially, well, not especially, but, uh, from people inside and outside of Rio District. I wish that everybody in the county could vote for me. Uh, I, I, you know, I think, um, I would bring to the board some, some diversity. I know that sounds weird as a white man saying this. But it would be diversity of thought. It, it, it is a, I have what I think is both the experience in education, 10 years of experience in education and 25 plus years in business that is sorely needed on this board where there isn't anybody else, to my knowledge, that has that, that expertise. But also to come as a, um, as a, as a means of giving teachers and families who have felt underappreciated and disconnected a voice. And so I plan to have a teacher advisory committee that I meet with on a regular basis to hear what's going well, what's not going well, and to, to do the same with parents. Um, not just in Rio, because if I'm on the board, I'm going to be serving the students of all of Almar County. But you can bet I'm going to be bringing some tiger team attention to, especially to Woodbrook Elementary School.
Um, I'll, I'll close with this. This is from a parent, Western Almar High School. And this individual does not want me to use his name. He says, don't use my name on this. Uh, my daughter goes to Western Almar High School and is friends with some of the trans students at Western. Um, she says, his daughter says, this perspective needs to be out there on, on the I Love Seville Show, that the trans students at Western are using the gender neutral bathrooms. That the boys that are going into the girls locker rooms are not the trans students.
Yeah.
It's teenage boys that want to see teenage girls.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We knew that was going to happen.
Yeah.
Right?
For sure.
We knew that was going to happen.
Yeah.
So this parent, through his daughter and this platform, the influence of the platform says, please let the show and the platform know that it's not the trans students at Western that are causing the trouble.
Right.
It's not the trans students at Western that are causing the trouble.
Yeah.
So emphasizing that right there on the show.
That's great.
Just teenage boys being teenage boys.
Yeah.
Which of course they would be.
Sure.
Um, you know, that's, uh, that's the show. His, he's got a fantastic URL. Jim for schoolboard.com. The fact that that was available was amazing.
I was shocked.
I know. Jim for schoolboard.com is the URL. It's a fantastic website. I mean, he's got a, a very robust website for content, um, and, and issues and his platform points. Jim for schoolboard.com. What, what, we, we're under a month. What do we got, four weeks?
Four weeks from yesterday.
Four weeks from yesterday left.
Yeah.
Uh, you can meet him tomorrow, uh, bring your popcorn and you probably might have to camp out tonight if you want to get to the school board meeting tomorrow. Because this is going to be the most highly anticipated and, and maybe attended school board meeting in Almar County history. Uh, I've been told that they're three X-ing the police presence at this school board meeting.
Yeah.
Um, with more, even more in the parking lot on standby.
Yeah.
Um, meet him there, reach out to him on, uh, through his website. I get the impression that he's not going to be sleeping much in the next four weeks and has going to have to be shaking a lot of hands and getting to know a lot of people.
Yeah.
Uh, you crushed this.
Thank you.
Seriously, you crushed this.
Appreciate the, the platform and the opportunity to get the word out. That's, I, I really appreciate it.
It was our pleasure. Um, that is one hour and 12 minutes straight without stopping with, uh, Jim Dillenbeck on the, on the, uh, I Love Seville Show. Judah Wickhour, thank you for helping set up the interview behind the camera. Judah coordinated, uh, the scheduling of this interview. Uh, Judah Wickhour behind the camera. That's the talk show, guys. We are back, uh, tomorrow, Thursdays. Today, mañana, tomorrow at 10:15. The Today, Mañana guys, the Erpi family has, uh, their show Today, Mañana at 10:15 AM tomorrow. And then the I Love Seville Show at, uh, at 12:30. Thank you kindly for joining us on the show. So long.